This was in the box.
I probably put it there.
You did?
Yeah.
You wanna try to fill that in, or is that a?
I'd like some opinion. I'd like your opinion on some of that stuff. Should now write for him, or?
No, fair enough. Can I come right?
Are we expecting anybody else?
No. Do we have any minute taking volunteers? I'm happy to do it if no one.
I'll do that.
Are you, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Pretty simplistic?
Well, as long as you're okay with it.
It's beautiful. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. How was your guys meeting?
I thought it was pretty good. I thought we could get a little traction and we're, we're starting to, uh, we're starting to develop into what we need to do, so, yeah.
Nice.
It's a little bit short, but I can make a note.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. Seven oh four. Uh, yeah. Angus. Sabrina, Alice, Paul sitting. And Steve. That's great. I have a correction to the minutes.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
I think Bullock's is spelled wrong.
Makes me think of like bow ties.
I think it's B-U-L-L.
O-C.
O-C-K, yes. Bullock's.
I noticed Maholland is spelled wrong, too.
Well, I am a math teacher.
Yeah, exactly. I was not here, but I would...
Help me with?
I would admit, um, the Cherry Hill proposal. Because the only reason the board saw that last month is because it was waiting in the box from many months ago, and I think we looked at it many months ago. So that it wasn't, there's, nothing has changed since April on that, so. There, or is it there?
August twenty-two edits.
There's a.
Yeah, and that will be gone?
Sure, if, if, uh, I would undertake a motion to accept them as amended.
I'm not gonna.
I'm not gonna get involved.
So who?
Do we have a second? All in favor?
High hand.
Okay. Well, I feel like we've reached a breaking point. Because the Valley News classified, legal classified this time for Scott's. We can blame Scott for the long-windedness. It was one hundred and thirteen dollars to put that classified in the Valley News. So we're, we're gonna get right on, even if we don't actually do anything to change the subdivision regulations, we can hold one public hearing. We have to pay another one hundred and thirteen dollars for it so that we can get rid of the need to put our public hearings in the newspaper.
Is that all we need to do, is have a public hearing?
I don't recall if we need one or two. I think we may only need one to, to edit the subdivision.
So what do we, what do we, um, notice this, if it's not in the newspaper?
Well, so Scott has helped in the past with, um, pointing out our essays that might be misleading to suggest that we don't need to put... You sent me some good.
Yeah, I think, I think that there is a way around using the newspaper now.
There is.
Between electronics and public postings. But the subdivision regulation, the graph, then, still called for using the newspaper.
It has to be.
So we need to change, we need to change that.
So whether we actually...
Subdivision regulations, that's like...
Well, right, so, so there's, one or two things can happen. Either we get our act together and really, like, revise something, or, um, or we just make that one change and push through it because there's no reason to keep spending a hundred dollars every time.
I think we should just concentrate on that one change and have the public hearing and change the fee, or change the requirement for that.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, um... Yeah.
That's not terribly cumbersome.
No.
And it's not controversial, we're not changing anything else except for that, so.
No, it's a new town vote or anything like that, just a, just a couple of public hearings if you like it.
So do we risk the... Since you're gonna be presenting another one of these next month.
Yeah, I got a couple coming up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is what it is.
No, it's silly, though. It's like a hundred bucks when we have the internet, like, come on. Like, you know, so, it's really out of hand. I, I, when it was sixteen, thirty-five dollars, those are fine. When it was seventy bucks last time, it's like, all right, maybe it was kind of long, but like, right, whatever, it's... That is like hypothetically over fifty percent of the annual planning board budget. To simply put it in.
One time.
One time, yeah. So that, whatever, um... Anyways, I would like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for next meeting. You just put it November twenty-first, maybe? Was that the Thursday before?
You, well, I was just saying that the October meeting, I will be away.
Oh, the October.
Right, the October meeting, I will be away, so we decided to, um, to wait until November.
Okay, so we're, you know.
But I'm there. It doesn't change our planning board meeting.
I'm backseat driver, I just wasn't paying attention. So yes, there is October before November. And we'll just do a normal meeting, and, and so let's, my motion would be to have a public hearing, basically, right off of that about, um, editing out the, um, requirement to put this in the newspaper from the subdivision regulations. So that, effective at that moment, we can hold another public hearing that does not require the newspaper posting.
Still the whole ten days and all that, just not in the Valley News?
Everything is the same, including website, two, or, uh, uh, two public places, uh, you know, that's, that's all the same. And I can get my, I can do a little homework on making sure that it's done right. I believe we only need one public hearing to change the subdivision regulations. Do you recall if there's a second one?
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Both, you have to have the, the changes, the wording, the changes available. Then the hearing on the board, after the hearing, the board can vote on the change.
Right, okay.
Just my recollection, don't quote me on it, like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sounds, sounds about right, the answer.
I think that's how it's.
All right, so, so supposing that everything is right, I have a motion to, I made a motion to schedule a public hearing for October...
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. To make it so we don't have to put our thing on the newspaper anymore.
A second motion.
All in favor? All right, okay, fine. And, let's see. First fundance is, um... So I've been holding a budget workshop for Budget Committee on Tuesday, October eighth, Planning Board is scheduled for ten fifteen.
Oh, they're scheduled right there.
Yeah.
And is the planning board on there?
It is, and I volunteered to just go. And that's great, so.
Do we know what the budget's gonna be? We need to design that.
I don't think we have any big changes. Do we have any opinions?
And their current budget's three hundred?
I think it's only two.
It's only two.
Do we want to increase it?
Make some, make some enemies, yeah, um.
Two gives us leeway to frontload some expenses and then get reimbursed from the interested parties?
For example, if our public hearing notice that we plan to give to change the subdivision regulations is as worded as Scott's was, we will blow most of our annual budget simply on changing the regulations this year. We'd like to be able to edit the regulations better. Although that, once we fix this problem, there won't be any more money to do that necessarily. I know, I'm... This, this hundred dollar bill.
So who would have any public hearings next year? It's gonna come right out of the?
But it won't, it won't, it won't cost anything anymore because we're getting there. Yeah, yeah, um... It's just throwing me off, like, maybe we oughta up it to three hundred dollars so that we have that, knowing that we have a very good history of not even spending our budget.
Yeah, you know, if somebody, people go to workshops for the planning board, ever, that costs some money?
Yeah, I went a few years ago. Ten years ago or something.
Yeah.
I think it might cost fifty dollars to, um...
Yeah, I went to one of those ones, I believe.
The books cost a very small amount.
So there's, you know, miscellaneous expenses like that?
Yep.
If a member wants to go for training, I, I would hate to say that we can't afford.
Right.
You know, we don't have that money in the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
To train you to do the job you got elected to do.
I'm...
And that, and people don't take advantage of it, do they, you know?
There's so many free resources, though.
There are a lot of free resources.
Um, that we can get even, you know, legally sound advice from, um...
From the municipal association?
Yeah, um, you know, and if we had to ask the, what is the New London Group?
The Upper Valley League.
Yeah, if we had to ask them for advice, you know, we could, uh...
I think we charge just an upper one.
Yeah, there, there's other sources in the state we can.
There are sources, um...
We don't need to go to the Regional Planning Commission, so, but I think there's other places where we can be able to get assistance.
Yeah.
You know, and the municipal association is, is a really good place, you can get the, pretty good legal advice. We don't have a complicated planning board with not many issues come up, not many subdivisions come up. So, um...
Right. I'm tempted to up it to three hundred, knowing that it'll go back to the general fund if we don't use it all. I know, I mean, I think, I think it's still a pretty inconsequential amount of money compared to.
It is, but if it was two hundred dollars and you know we're upping it to three, it's, oh, fifty percent increase, but I, I, I'll go along with it. Let's see what happens when I go to State Budget Committee.
I don't know, I'll make a motion to up it to three hundred.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, so I'll, uh, go to bat. At ten fifteen in the morning.
Or call me.
Very, very. Okay. This was in our box. Did you put that in, or was that a sub?
I put that in.
Well, I didn't put it in, but we, as a committee, wrote the letter to the department heads.
Yeah. Asking for capital improvement ideas. Sabrina's the one who drafted, I mean, documented our.
No, the committee did.
The committee, right, the committee, right. We got no response.
Very.
Do we have a survey?
We have a form, so we gave them a form.
Okay.
To fill out.
Okay. But I, I don't think there was one in the planning board box, no?
I, I have no share.
I, I think this is all I ended up seeing.
Sabrina, were you saying they, they cut the form as well?
Attached survey?
Um, that's what she said she was gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
Attached survey, so.
Well, I mean, for the planning board, it may be irrelevant because we are not budgeting things in the five-figure range. So, that's fine.
Yes, that was supposed to be accompanied by a blank form.
Yeah.
Um, that they could fill out with their capital improvement suggestions, but if that did not appear in their boxes, that would have been a problem.
Look, maybe.
But Sarah.
I could have dropped it, too.
But Sarah, Sarah had it electronically, and I think Sarah was putting it in people's boxes, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I guess.
This is what it looks like.
I, I.
Great, all right. Okay, great, that's awesome. Okay, uh... New business. I wasn't here for the original, the initial presentation, but Scott, do you wanna come on up and we can make what we can of this whole Briggs subdivision?
Um, yeah, yeah, this, this is gonna be the hearing for Briggs, uh?
Yeah, let's do that.
Um, is this the hearing? Was this?
Yeah, it's here. It does have to be here, yeah.
You want, wanna look through and accept the application as complete?
Right, let's, let's look through that and then we get a permit.
I mean, we look, I know, we go through it when I brought it in. And, um, so, like, before we vote on something as complete, and then when we have a public hearing, I'll give our spiel.
You've done this before.
We do have it on minutes from last time that we voted to accept as complete an application.
Okay. Yeah, well, you'll need, I do that video sort of, I appreciate showing a little, you know.
Great.
Over to Maholland, roll.
Thank you. Think the, maybe the most noteworthy thing is that a waiver is requested for a certain boundary survey of the bigger lot because it's undeveloped and large and clearly meets all minimum standards. I don't have any issue with that.
How big is that lot?
The remaining one? Excellent, all right. Uh, twenty-two acres?
Yeah, I'll go through the particulars.
Yeah, lots of printage and, uh, just things that are, you just need to make sure that you have all the evidence
to pursue in the application. The application included a further authorization me to represent, um, the client, um, that the completed application filled out, has a current use of property, uh, list of new letters.
Right.
Who would notify appropriately on the planning board draw with applicable information for topography monument set and so forth. Well, I think, I will, I can point out to you ahead of time is that, um, I'm gonna ask for just a conditional approval tonight. I thought I'd have the state approval on the two-acre lot by now, but they've been dragging their feet. They asked for a little clarification on something on the test pit, uh, log that the designer did. Um, we got that, you know, a few days back, but we still haven't gotten, uh, thumbs up from them. But I fully anticipate, so I would ask that the board just, um, make the conditional upon these. And then into the plan, of course, get one, one set sale.
Great, okay, I just wanna write down a few things on the application. This was received, well, what, what was the date of the last meeting, the twenty?
Twenty-second August.
All right, all right, so it was officially accepted at the, um...
This, my hearing's not great. Can you tell me again the, uh, reason for the request for conditional approval?
The, uh, State Department of Environmental Services has to approve the two-acre lot. And that application was submitted about four weeks ago, about the same time as the application here. And usually they're done by, they had a question to clarify some information and they've received that information but haven't acted on it, yeah.
Scott, last time we did a subdivision, it was unclear exactly when we should open the hearing. And I feel like you had an expectation to do it at a different point than I was expecting. And does it matter, or do you have? I, I think what happened last time is I was waiting for you to present and then open for public comment after that.
My, my main presentation is part of the public hearing.
That's, uh, okay.
Typically, when the public hearing opens, the board will ask the applicant to present their application and then open it up to comments, questions from the stakeholders in the public.
All right, well, let's, let's do that, then.
And then, once you've received the public's information, the board, then you close the public hearing and the board deliberates. And that can include asking questions of the applicant.
Yeah. All right, do you wanna come and show us what you have, and we'll open the public hearing?
So you, you, you were checking the application.
It was.
That's part of the formal.
Didn't that happen last month?
That happened last month?
Yeah. What was that, accepting it?
As.
Just, you accept, it's a two-step process. You accept the application as complete, which is not part of the public hearing.
Right.
Administrative on the board's part.
Right, but that happened last month.
Pardon?
That, that happened last month.
No, that, that hasn't happened formally, right, immediately in front of the, because that was, that was the original submission. And then after the twenty-one days, to give everybody time to review.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
You did review it, so it's boiling plate for point.
It could happen. All right, do we have a second?
But do we say that, um, that's, um, pending the D E S?
That, no.
That's different.
That'll be different.
Okay.
We made a motion to approve, the motion will be to approve conditional upon.
That one.
And it's D E S.
All right, let's just go with, with, with this. So Steve made a motion, do we have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, all right, um, well, let's open this public hearing now, Scott.
I got a couple of the planning options if anybody wants to see it. And before we came to the application. Anybody out here want to see the plan? So the, uh, the application's for Mitch Briggs. He had, like, twenty-four acres of public space in the area. Three, four of them on his, uh, four. And property has a log cabin, which was probably been bought at some point. Had existing residence, some septic system, and lots of disproportionate floors to sort of divide into two lots, a two-acre lot around the residence, and then the remainder will be an undeveloped twenty-two acres, give or take. And so, the, uh, I mean, it's really, it's pretty simple and straightforward. The, uh, we're not, this, this, we meet the minimum requirement, the two-acre lot. We have sufficient frontage to not trigger the major category. And, um, the lot two being so large, we haven't done any detailed site work on that, as is customary. The perimeter is shown from existing survey maps. I did survey the, the whole frontage, little frontage. Uh, and then the two-acre lot, uh, though there's an existing functional septic system and everything, uh, there's, it's not a recent enough design, as I understand, on someone for the state, so we did a new test pit. And there's ample room on the two-acre lot to have an alternate well location and septic site that meets all the regulations of the state, and that's all shown on here. And that's the information that gets submitted to the state for their approval of that two-acre lot.
So, so it was on the slot, it's already developed, right? It's got the log cabin?
Yeah.
It's already got it, existing septic system, but it's two.
It is, but the state still, the state needs to approve, the, the state needs to know that it can meet all the current regulations.
Yeah, so we, we, dig a, a test pit, does it have to have a design or anything like that?
You don't have to design the system, you have to dig a test pit and show that it have adequate conditions. And you have to show an area of four thousand square feet that meets all the setbacks to wetlands, to the property lines, to the road and things like that.
And he doesn't, you have to do anything with it once this gets approved, so.
That's correct, yeah, you just have to show the state that you can build out and meet all the current regulations. You don't have to change anything now, but you have to show that it can be done if the septic system were to fail or.
There's a, there's a spot that's taken, it plays a, uh, and the other, the other lot's just like an empty lot, basically?
Yeah, so, yeah, just a large, undeveloped lot, twenty-two acres instead of twenty-four, so essentially, I mean, for practical purposes unchanged. Lots of road, frontage, lots of places that could conceivably be accessed from, uh, the, you know, again, we're not changing anything in terms of the access of the, for the residents that there now will use the existing driveway. There's a yard area that we're including on that lot. There's an area of kind of wetland, a stream with some adjacent wetlands that runs out in behind there, but there's plenty of room between the road and that to, to accommodate whatever needs to be accommodated without getting into wetland permitting and that sort of thing, so. It's really pretty simple, pretty simple subdivision in this case. I'll open it up to any questions, and I guess I'll just, um, I'll just, uh, expand a little bit on the reading for the, uh, request for the conditional permit. And that is that the state on the test pit that was submitted, which was done by a contracted licensed designer, the County Soil Group has one grouping, and the, the data from the test pit, the state said was more like a different grouping than the grouping that the county showed, so they wanted a little bit of additional information on the test pit to just clarify the ambiguity. What the, what they thought, they actually thought it was better soil than what we showed. So the calculations that we need are gonna show more suitable area than what they would have otherwise, so on, but it's just.
Well, I mean, it's, it's even better than we thought.
It's the state being the state.
Well, actually, it's just entirely ledge, and then Mitch went out with like a hammer drill and bored one little hole filled with some nice, uh, soil, man.
No, we actually had very, we had, yeah, we had good conditions where we took the, where we took the test, uh, um, so, but the, the county, county survey, which was a more broad-based survey, and they based the minimum off siding on that. It just, it still shows decent soils, but what we found was better. So the state just wants some numbers and calculations to reflect that as opposed to saying, well, it's, it's better, and you've already shown you meet the worst case. So why don't we just approve the better situation? But that's too simple.
It is too simple. What's the, what's the timeline on that, do you think?
I would expect it any day. I thought I, I submitted the additional information a week ago. I thought I'd have it by now, but they haven't had it yet, which I sent them before they came in. So I would, I would anticipate it anytime.
Okay, so you, you don't have a MyLar tonight?
I have it with me. I'll leave it with you, but, but just don't, don't send it into the registry until you get the confirmation of the state's approval.
Okay.
No, it's like, uh, the, it's not gonna result in any changes to the plan or anything like that.
Right. Okay. Any questions? Can I ask a question, um, Scott? Scott, the, there's an existing well.
Yep.
And does that, is it a seventy-five foot radius from the existing well, get into that four thousand square foot disposal area?
It does, but there's an alternate location that can meet it, and that's the state.
The alternate location.
The state only requires the build-out, per se, as opposed to.
I see.
So, if your existing conditions now don't meet all requirements, I mean.
You have.
That's okay, because it's all, I mean, this all, it's all old and goes that way, so, so you just have to show them that you can move things around in order to meet the current requirements, which is what we've done with that alternate well location.
Yeah. So, is lot one, test pit, the town bridge, the one that is better than they were expecting, or is the?
The, it's, yeah, the test, the test pit that we've done on lot one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the overall county soil under, it's showing up what they call a group three.
Yeah.
Which, what that means is it's well-drained, moderately well-drained, but with a permit, an in, a restrictive layer with a certain level of the surface. Group two soils don't have that restrictive layer, so it actually perks better than, than what the group three does. And the test pit results indicate more of a group two.
Yeah.
But the, the, the septic designer didn't really catch that and didn't label it as such, so I didn't catch it with the calculations I made. The state looked at the review of the test pit log and said, hey, that's group two, not group three, so that's what we, we just responded.
Alright, anyone have any questions or comments? What's that guy think?
No.
Alright. Anyone else to share?
No, I didn't, you can, you can, you can close the hearing.
Yeah.
Deliberate on the application as a word.
Yep.
Still have any answering questions?
Alright, so our hearing is closed at seven thirty-five. And.
Do we need, do you have a comment?
We just got some votes.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yes, okay, sorry.
Yeah. May night. I think this is fine with the conditional suggestion.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, seems like.
I know that last fall, we conditionally approved Anson Smith's four A subdivision, and then it took many, many months for the final DOT approval to come in, and it was long enough that I suggested we have a board meeting to approve the seven milar. I don't necessarily think if it's a matter of a week, and I mean, it's here, I'd happy to just take the milar and send it once we learn that, if this is received. Yeah, if we, if we do the conditional approval once that comes in, I think. Yeah. If, 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 you know, just forward it, all forward a door.
Yeah. And I can pop you up to, so, tell us, so.
If we get like past the holidays and it still hasn't shown up for some.
It can be, if it goes that long, it would be all horrible.
Right. Yeah, okay.
What a problem.
Alright, well, I would entertain a motion to accept the subdivision as presented. Conditional to.
Conditional policy.
Receiving the, the test pit details. Alright, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great.
Yeah, we need to talk about a rate for checks.
Yeah.
We lost, so the milar's in there, since the well, I put it in two.
Yep.
If you have a checkbook, then it needs to be signed with an actual.
I, I don't have a checkbook.
That's yours now.
Up and having it.
That, that went on the first thing in the morning.
I think it's very little playing board meeting.
Yeah, it has to be signed with a chart, if it's just a regular, you know, it's type of shoe. So, let's see, twenty-six.
Right, so, do you have business checkbook with you? Do you wanna, okay, yeah, you, you wanna do an L chip check to include in there?
Yeah, I can do that.
And then, I think we'll let the town.
Town cover the page for calling.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll let the payroll bill the town, and then, so you'll pay, what, twenty-five real chip, and then you'll give us twenty-six plus the felony news classified?
Yep, you, you give me the number.
Alright, so it's.
But obviously, you have to do the L chip, so.
Right, so it's one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents.
One thirty-nine and forty?
Yeah. Great. Awesome, thank you. Okay, I'll go away, because you have other things to share with us.
I do.
Alright.
Alright, so I have another application to submit. You can do as much of the little check about as you want with us, and we're doing this. So, if anybody know, we, uh. So, here's the package I emailed you, did the coffee this afternoon, which you probably got, I have a couple of sort of, if there are extra things, you will control up to, if you want, but anything to deal with all, but it would, you know, it would just be a very brief overview, and this is just to make sure you're comfortable enough to schedule hearing for the next meeting. And then I tell the studio, brief overview, the, the application, as usual, had a good thing. So, this is, it's a two, two-part proposal. It is for Bill Hall, who has for a number of years had some property out on Turnpike Road, right across, and across from the Brooks Crossing comes out. And he owns two pieces of land up there in conjunction with some other relatives. And one piece is, I can't remember who he knows. So, one piece is about fifty-eight acres, that's tax lot six, four thirty-six, it's completely undeveloped at this time. That has about, you know, thousand, over thousand feet on, on Turnpike Road. And then he also owns tax lot six dash four oh seven, which, this is a little bit more patterned over here, which is landlocked, and is accessed by a right way over another relative's land, up to Turnpike Road.
Is that the Blouse Bog?
Was that?
Is it, is, yeah, yeah. It's a fascinating.
That's, that's the one, so you got a driveway that comes around that, and that's just a camp that's right up near the boundary line of these, between these two pieces. The boundary between the two is an old discontinued road, but it was clearly discontinued, there's no public rights left in it, so it's just a boundary line now, nothing more. So, what he would like to do is annex about nine acres from the fifty-eight acre lot to his twenty-four acre lot, which will give the twenty-four acre lot frontage on Turnpike Road. And then, out of what's left, he wants to subdivide a single four acre lot with frontage on Turnpike Road. The, I mean, the reason he's doing this, for whatever it's worth, and it really doesn't matter, but he's, it's to settle, settle up some stuff for his sister, who owns, he owns the land with, so that's the whole reasoning behind it, what he's doing. So, it's pretty hot, because nobody's planning to do anything physically on site at this point in time or anything like that, but. So, so we're showing the boundary adjustment between the two pieces, and on the subdivision of one of the parcels into a four acres, with the remaining, after everything is said and done, it's gonna be about forty-five acres left over on tax lot six dash four thirty-six. So, we've got, so it's all mine, it's all mine, it's a different stuff. Four acre lot will need the state approval, that will be going in shortly. And we still haven't gotten the test pit log from the designer yet, so that's the way, the blank space on the plan I have tonight, but we'll have to complete it, everything completed on the atomic.
Is the access to this lot from here? Or is it more like from here?
Yeah, this, this has, this, this lot will wrap around, well, the, the physi, physically, there's an existing trail that goes down through, and this is a lot of marsh and wetland, but there's, that's an old established wood road with a corridor crossing suitable for logging. I mean, he's not looking to change the physical access to this or anything like that, but I think he just wants to improve the options and be able to have the frontage, shouldn't be.
So, like, not knowing, i- if we weren't aware of where the wetland was, it would seem at first glance, like, why wouldn't you just have this tucked up to the border there? But the fact of the matter is, that's the most, that's the nicest little choke to get.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And so, to get to the back, out of that, but like, if you were to build, you might be more likely to get built there.
Yeah, yeah, so if he were to come up with another building law, I think that's where he would do it. And then, again, I'm not really sure how much any of that's driving this, but other than, he definitely wanted to keep this, the road access on, on the remainder lot that he was keeping. So, it's definitely been used for some long, and all over the years. It would, I mean, it would take, to do any more than that, would, it would take some pretty serious permitting with the state to get across that wet area, but, but that's not what he's looking to do now, is just keeping that option. If, if the board needs to know that this law can support suitable, you know, single residence, then there is adequate area in here for that purpose. So, you, you wouldn't need a wetland permit in order to get to a place where you can do it, there's actually some really nice, really nice land up that there, but, but you wouldn't have to access that area in order to have a single residence on the lot. And so, in the detail, I've shown some topography in that area to show there is, there's some forested, poorly drained areas down the other kind of flank, the, the bigger marsh area. And I'm showing all, but there's lots of space, this is the setback line from it, so there's plenty of room in here for the four acre lot. And I didn't show it because it's part of such a large lot, but there's, there's room to sneak something, it's a little tired, but there'd be room to sneak something in there if somebody needed to. Plus, there's the potential access to the back.